Good evening, everyone. Do the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I don't see.
Nope, Larry's not here. Okay.
Front door just breached.
Yeah, okay. Good evening, everyone. Okay, we'll get started. Well, that might be the thing coming in.
Yes.
That Larry?
Yeah.
Okay, the first thing on the agenda is public input. Is there anyone that would have anything they want to say? Please raise your hand, your name, and...
Sandy Sheridan.
Hi Sandy.
I'm representing the WTPA. And we are looking at doing renovations to the green room. And we would like to have your approval in these renovations that we are doing. I'll pass out a diagram of them. You already have a diagram. You still have it?
Yep, I do.
We brought in our gentleman here to give us some thoughts on it.
Thank you.
That's this room, right?
I was waiting to get to this point and see how everything is.
See how everything is, yes.
Yep.
If you'd like me to go over, would you like me to go over blow-by-blow with you? I'd be glad to.
Appreciate it.
We, first of all, we want to improve the lighting. The lighting is certainly substandard in there. And of course, our guests who perform there, they come, they oftentimes have their dinners there. And so, we are looking to just upgrade it a little bit better and make it easier to clean and easier on the eye. So, some of the things we're looking at is, there are two doors, if you will notice, over on the left-hand side. We just feel that's very unnecessary. So, we're going to remove one of those doors and just leave the other one. At one time during some of the performances, there isn't anything that keeps anyone from going down into the basement. We had some kids who sort of misused that, so we feel a gate should go there. At the same time, that area is going to be painted and there's going to be new lighting going in there. In the major room, we want to, we actually would like to expose the brick wall that is there. And we think that would be just a really neat thing to do. And of course, then we're going to do new wallboard. It's all over paneling. We're going to take that down, do new wallboard, paint it. And we'd like to put in engineered wood flooring in there. So, it's not the carpet. The carpet's aged. We don't really feel we need to do, to keep that, of course. Electrical outlets as required. All the electrical components are going to be upgraded in there. We see that all the way through the entry room. There's a terrible step there. It's probably not more than five inches wide, so anybody who has a big foot could easily trip. We want to repair that and put a railing there. And then, we would like to put a little bar with stools in there so that they have a place to eat, an easy little place to put the food. We oftentimes bring food in for them. And then, our sound equipment is just sitting here in this larger room exposed. We would like to put that in a closet so it's protected and locked and safe. Again, that room, the carpet will come up, engineered flooring will go in. And we're also going to change the, or actually repair the plaster or the walls and that sort of thing, just paint. Ceiling's going to be replaced. I think that pretty much covers it. And we would just like to, you know, we're probably going to do this, I would say, in the wintertime. We find that calling contractors in right now is just a real challenge. They're all very busy. So, we have one who we've already called and we'd like to get an estimate. We certainly are going to get several estimates to do this. But we're really ready to move forward once the summer season's over. And we might have better luck if we had someone in there to do the work. We have had a lot of electrical work done in the front part of the stage. So, we feel we just want to continue doing that through the back section of that. You have any questions?
So, do we need just approval for further planning and implementation?
That's what we're looking for.
It's not ready, obviously, yet to, you know, put the shovel around?
No. There's no need, but we're just looking for your approval to do this.
Make a motion. So, I would be happy to make a motion that, assuming that everything is good with our code enforcer, that we give the WTPA approval to move forward with the planning and implementation of this. And then, when the plan is ready to go, we'll look at some of the final planning.
Oh sure, we'll do that, yes.
I need a second on that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you very much.
Josh, thank you for being available to take the walkthrough. It's so great to have someone. Take care.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you again.
And I'm Gail Sheridan, working with Nate too. Basically, what I'm asking is that we move forward with our plans to put a sprinkler system in. And right now, I've got an update here of where we are. But we have contacted the company that does it. And what we need to do is find out whether we have enough water volume and pressure to do the whole building. And what we're looking at is getting a grant to do the project. It's going to be a very expensive project. We know that. Our first estimates are very high. We're trying to hide all the pipes, so there's going to be no pipes. And each individual, what do they call it?
Sprinkler heads.
Sprinkler head would be independent of the others. So, if you had a fire here, it isn't going to set off the whole system. It's just going to be individual. But we need water pressure to be proper and the volume to be there. So, we've been working on that. And we're asking that Butch and the people will help us get that. We've got to have another company come in to actually do that from the fire hydrant that's close by. I have nothing except wanting to keep you informed. I guess I have no handouts.
I understand, I appreciate what you're doing, but you realize that before anything is done, we need a board. I mean, just you guys are going ahead with a whole bunch of stuff. I hope it's not a lot of money that you're paying out because we don't know what the final, you know, I mean, I appreciate the idea. I need to know, does the whole building have to be done? Does this section have to be done? Does, can you do it just a certain section? I mean, we have a lot of questions, I mean, I know.
I don't have any of those answers.
Okay.
And we are at the very beginning. And all we want to know is, can we keep moving forward?
Just to find out more numbers and things like that.
It makes a lot of sense to us to protect that.
Right.
And especially the big area. And that's going to be the expensive thing.
The theater part, yeah.
The whole theater part. But if we're going to do it, we're going to try to get grants so that we cover the costs for the whole building. If we can get those grants, then we'll be doing it for the whole building. If you're, if you want us to keep moving forward. It's a project that we've had on our list for several years, but we haven't moved forward. We think we need to protect this place of investment.
It would be beneficial to us to take, if you guys could. I mean, you're the only one spending any money.
Pardon?
You're the only one spending any money, so I don't have a problem.
Yeah.
Motion.
But we're going to...
Go ahead and...
Well, are there going to be annual cost inspections, like going forward, other than after the...
They'll be yearly inspections and everything.
Is that something that you, that...
No, another outfit will have to do that, that handles sprinkler systems and everything. But if you're going to, you should do the whole building. It's kind of like changing one break in a car.
Yeah, I was just saying, I don't know anything about it, so it's just...
Of course, are the inspections like a salary or...
There's service agreements that you can have done. I'm not too sure every place is different. But yeah, yearly maintenance and service on them is required. And being a place of assembly, you're really supposed to have a sprinkler system too.
Basically, tonight, I'm asking permission from you to move forward to check the water volume and the water pressure.
To see if it'll...
Even feasible to keep going.
That's something you can do, Butch?
No, they have a guy who's doing that. I've been to the hospital, when they do their tests...
I told Jim, we have just a basic D. We don't have what's needed to do the test that's required for the system.
So, yeah, you'd have to get somebody to do that.
We need your permission to go ahead and do it.
Oh, yeah, 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 no, but I'm just, yeah.
I was just saying, that would be one of your principal expenses to begin with, is just to get a flow test on it. And it depends on the size, pipes and everything.
Were you making the motion?
I did make a motion.
I second it.
All those available?
Aye.
Pose.
Okay.
Motion's for what, Dick?
To continue to look at, you know, the possibility for a sprinkler system in the building.
Is that risk to allow them to conduct the test of the water pressure?
It's just, we're going to a hydrant.
Yeah.
Thinking about a hydrant, it's not a big...
Yeah, thank you.
And we'll keep you updated as we go?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes. I talked to Brian Sprague about two...
And you were?
Brian Sprague.
Your name, I didn't know your name either.
I'm Adam Gray. I do a booster club volleyball. Of course, I do, I'm a varsity student at Austin Linken High School. We've been trying to get volleyball, sand volleyball courts up at Austin Linken. Somebody went to Brian to try to get, we've been trying it for a couple of years, but finally he found a spot for us. And we're going to, I mean, I got nothing in my booster club thing to pay for everything but the sand. But because it's going to be permanent, we had to, he said I had to come here and go through you guys. Because I want to, instead of doing poles, I want to do six-by-sixes and cement them in. And that way, we could take the, we're not using the nets because we don't want them to get destroyed.
You can take them down.
I'm just going to put hooks on them. That way, we can just unhook them. Then we're going to put it, whether it's a guy's level or a girl's level. And it could be used for like, anybody who want to have tournaments and stuff, make money.
Where bosses are going to go?
It's going to, as you're going into the Austin Linken, at the parking lot here...
On the left-hand side?
Yeah. And then, they have the temporary field hockey, the practice place.
Yeah.
And that's where he said it would be a great place to put it.
But he was okay with that?
Yeah, he said just to make sure because we want to put permanent. We've got our six-by-sixes and, we have a pole digger, everything to put it all in. I mean, we're not asking for any money. We're going to do a fundraiser, try to get the sand. We already have all the money for everything but the sand. So, this year, we might not get the sand in, but hopefully by next year, we will. Because other schools are awesome, like Delhi just put one in, Yonah Tigo's got one. Eventually, you might be able to do like a...
Leagues or something.
Yeah. And they already do leagues over Sydney, my other daughter plays. And that's money you could put towards the booster club. But it's all in booster club, so...
Butch, did Brian discuss this with you?
He mentioned a while ago, we, I mean, how long we have to figure out who's responsible for the damages or something, that's a hell of a problem.
Well, that's why we figured if we cemented them in and it's just going to be the pole, we just got to figure out where we're going to put the net when people want to use it. Because I don't want them to have to come to me every time. And it's booster club anyway, so if there's like a shed, we could just put it in. Or when people want it, just to get a hold of booster club. I mean, I'm easy to get a hold of, but I just, maybe I just want to get something. One thing, I do third through sixth grade. I started probably about seven years ago, and, which has been a great program. And I, it's hard to get the gym space. So, if I can get it outside, I could also do my third through sixth grade outside instead of having to worry about getting gym space. So, that's all I'm asking is if we can just put it up there. Really no money. How do you guys sit?
We need a motion.
What does Butch say?
Yeah.
Is it something we can do?
They can do, yeah.
Yeah, not you, yeah.
Any assurances and that kind of thing, obviously, you want to ensure towards the nets.
Right, I figured I'd talk to up there and find out where we could store the net. That's the main thing, is the net.
Yeah, they do.
They don't want to keep buying the nets, so they come up with...
Get your close family building up there.
Yeah, they got the football.
Yeah, they have the football. They have a building up there.
But they said there's often a shed somewhere, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's every, the booster club building is every closer.
Yeah.
So, I would make a motion that you start to do the work on it and just work with Brian so everybody knows what's happening.
Okay.
Anything to the party?
Second, you got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That it?
That's it.
I'm not, it's enough, I didn't mean it to go like that. Anyone else? Okay, the next thing would be the abstracts. Everyone's had a chance to take a look at it, made a motion, if they have no adjustments or anything.
I motion that we approve the abstract.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carrie. Bill? You want to be fresh, right? You got to go someplace, right?
Yes, please. Hi there. I got just a couple of project updates and I do have one to ask tonight. At the wastewater plant, on the INI study, the village was awarded a grant last year. We sent all the paperwork back in to receive the grant funds and we're waiting on those from the state. So, when that's issued, we'll look to coordinate the INI study and get the cameras in and try to find out where our sources of INI are coming through. Last month, we did an update to the village, to the New York State Environmental Facility's Intended Use Plan. We listed a project to make upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant to replace some of the older equipment at the facility. So, we put in some preliminary information. The state will score that information and based on that score, it will determine what your potential eligibility for funding is, depending on where that falls in this year's and next year's funding cycle. That may give us some direction on when we can do and what we might or might not be eligible for. So, that's kind of in the works. The one thing we are asking for related to the grit screw, which we had budgeted to make some repairs this year, we received a quote from WTP Equipment Corporation. They're the manufacturer of the grit screw that was installed four years ago now. It's a very aggressive environment. We end up having to do it once a year to replace bearings and parts and pieces. So, we got a quote from them to replace the wear parts, bearings, and components that hold all the other parts and pieces together. So, we are asking the board to consider issuing a purchase order to WTP Equipment Corp. in the amount of $3,825, which is their quote. That does include shipping. And it's about 45 weeks out to get the parts upon receipt of vac reconstruction, as we installed the quote, or installed the equipment four years ago. Last month, we got bids in from multiple contractors to have a term agreement for stuff like this, miscellaneous parts and pieces, to have them installed. So, we would look to bring Bakri in to install that equipment.
Well, it's a budgeted village expense.
Yes, sir.
Right, so I'll make the motion that we submit the purchase order.
Second.
All due?
Aye.
Pose. Carrie.
On the switching gears, kind of the other end of the pipe on the water project, the village, we know, was awarded a 60% LEA grant to cover 1.2 million of a $2 million water system upgrade. The plans are being prepared for that. The survey was completed over the last month. Surveyors out of Delhi came and did that work. And we're reviewing plans with the DPW to determine where the water mains are going to go and where the hydrants are going to go and that kind of stuff. So, my goal is to finalize those plans over the summer, to send them up to the health department for their review, to be bidding the work out in the fall, to put us in a position to be building the work, building the project next year.
Which project is it?
Water project. So, we're replacing water lines on Bruce and Union and Old Prospect going towards Deposit. Those are some of the oldest water mains in the village and are some of the last four-inch water mains in the village, which are below minimum standards for water systems today. So, replacing water lines, also making upgrades to one of the Curry wells and repairs and maintenance to the villages' water tanks.
So, it's just a request of the health department?
Yeah, we don't, we're not requesting anything formally right now, but we will be sending plans to the health department for their sign-off.
So, I'm motion that that's okay?
Second.
Yeah, we do need it.
All in favor?
Aye. Next year, do you really want to be done with it?
Yeah. Pipe, right now, is a minimum of 30 weeks out for ductile iron pipe. So, we're trying to get it in the queue now so we can be ready to...
30 weeks out, wow.
On the short end. The other water project the village is in the works on is replacement of the Curry well that's close to Westbrook. We've done some testing there, or we did receive test results back on some follow-up testing that was done after the preliminary tests showed some high iron and manganese. We expected that was related to some sand and silt that was kind of suspended in the water because it was a new well and things were kind of stirred up. So, we did some supplemental testing and that does look to be the case, based on the lab results that came back. The iron and manganese were, you know, in the silt that was not in the water. So, which was positive, which is good. So, our next step is to finalize their report that's being prepared by Sterling Environmental. And they're going to give us a recommendation to install the larger well, which has to be tested as well. Install the larger well. And if that proves out, that would be the production well to be connected to the water system. So, we're reviewing the final test results that came in with Sterling. The state health department and EPA are also in the process of changing some of their rules and regulations based on upcoming concerns that they have at the federal level. So, we're kind of reviewing those to see how that may impact our water system as well. That project is being funded with the ARPA funds that the village receives the first half of last summer and will receive the second half of this summer.
So, I know we're still, we're still at it, but I mean, that's great news, testing is like that, more positive results.
Yeah, yeah, it was successful, you know, and worthwhile to do that follow-up testing before we took the big dive into putting the production well in. That's going to be a big investment for the village, so we want to know. We have a good expectation of that being successful. So, that's why we did the initial testing upfront.
If it's suspended, if it's a suspended solid, you can filter it out.
Well, we could filter it out. We're trying to not have to filter anything. We don't filter anything now. We just add chlorine and a chemical for corrosion control. So, that's what we would like to do, is just continue with not having to filter. The solids are sediment in the water. And if we put a smaller screen in and we develop the well, when it's being installed, develop it longer, we developed it for like 24 hours. When we did the test well, we may have to do 48 or 72 hours of development to clear the water up. And then, we wouldn't have to filter is our goal.
Okay.
If we have to filter, that's a whole, and we have to build the filter plant.
Have to build the whole thing.
Additional treatment. In some cases, it becomes what's required, you know? We would like to not have to do that, but in some cases, that's what's required, so that proceeds. The other ongoing projects we have is the highway garage replacement, which is funded in part by a grant from DASNY, which would have been awarded through Senator Metzger's office. That contract's been awarded. Materials are coming in. We have the roofing on site from a contractor, the village DPW, Butch and his group have done a lot of legwork, which has saved the village a lot of money to get the building down and do a lot of the prep work.
You got the contractor?
Tweedy Construction, local company, was the low bidder. I think we had five bidders and Tweedy was the low. They've done other similar work in the area. So, we, the village awarded that two months ago and they're ordering all their lumber and steel and trusses and parts and pieces.
Yeah, DPW did a lot, the guy, the crew, Butch, thank you, they did a lot. Saved us a lot of money.
Yes.
That's for sure. That's it, thank you.
That's all I got. Thanks, Bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Oh, all right, yeah. Josh?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Everybody get my report?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions with it? Okay.
Very thorough.
Just as usual.
Yeah. All right. So, the only other thing that I got, did everyone get the paperwork from New York State Environmental Conservation to...
Yeah, forgive me, mine's my email, my printer doesn't...
Okay. All right. So, I'll say the only other thing that we need to deal with is possibly a public hearing to adapt the new LoMar that was with the flood projects on Eastbrook.
So, something we have to do anyway, so...
Yep, yep. We have until October something, to October, October 4th.
And that, of course... Make the date next month?
We'll do it next, for the next meeting.
Okay.
Might be far a minute.
And so, that's to accept the amendments.
The work and the amendments. And of course, we want to do that.
Yes.
So...
Absolutely.
Yep.
I'm sorry, it's the amendments to what, Josh, I can carry on?
For the LoMar and all the work that was done with the...
The flood maps?
Yep, yep. That was the projects that were done over on Eastbrook.
Took what, like 23 properties off?
Yeah, don't quote me on it. I think it was 21 that were removed from the special flood area. And then, there was other ones that were downgraded, so...
So, we'll do it next, we'll do it next...
Make a motion to hold that hearing next, next month's meeting?
Yep.
Second?
Yeah, I guess so.
We'll have to...
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Just have to draft up the wording, there's a template included.
Dave, I guess that would be, give it to Dave, right? Or you?
Um...
We can do it.
Yeah? Okay.
Yep, okay.
All right.
Anything else?
No.
All right.
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Shane?
Everybody have a chance to look at the report?
Yep.
Have any questions?
Looks pretty good.
We have a couple requests that we would like. The first request is for Cook Painting to paint the sludge holding tank. The paint's all been peeling off for three years. And the cost of that is $16,977. And that is a budgeted expense and that's 50% for the village and 50% for the DEP.
Motion, we proceed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Carrie.
And the second request is to authorize Tagger Electric to replace the, the lights on the EQ tank. There's four of them, and they will be changed out to LED, and they will, you know, save some electricity, and the cost for that is three thousand eight hundred dollars. And this is also a budgeted expense, and it's fifty percent village and fifty percent DEP.
Motion to replace the lights?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry.
And other than that, that's all I have. You know, the plan's been running good. We had a DEP inspection on six twenty-nine, and they were happy with how the facility was running and looked.
The color's okay, and so far, everything's been-
It's been better.
Okay.
Not perfect yet?
But we're getting there, right?
Yep.
Okay.
By all due self.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Butch?
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
Everybody but one person got my report?
Two people.
Any concerns, questions?
There was the one having to do with wipes in the water main. Watched another section of the sewer main due to flow restriction caused by wipes.
Yep.
So we've talked about this before, and now apparently the wipes are causing a problem even before they get to the-
Yes, and that, and that blockage was actually found by accident. It was on a Friday, and we're doing dig safes. So Matt popped the manhole, see where the sewer lines are going, and there it was. So we, fortunately, we caught it on a Friday, so we jetted it. Wasn't a weekend ordeal like we've had in the past. So, yeah, yeah, they're still out there.
Certainly appreciate you guys catching that, and we beg the public to please, please don't flush wipes, any kind of wipes that are not toilet paper. They are not flushable, and they're messing up the pipes even before they're messing up the wastewater, wastewater treatment. Thanks for catching.
Sure. Blacktop One Street, Culbissel Stone will be back later, probably early fall to do a cleanup wells that we're done, doing our portion of the job. Lane is actually in right now, redeveloping our well that was scheduled for this year, and they said today that so far that's looking good. So, not kind of wood, we're in good shape with that one. I touched base with the telemetry guy, because we were having issues with the last storm. Bunch of our probes got taken out again. So we're kind of getting those fixed, but the guy doing the telemetry upgrade, getting supplies, right now we're very, very bad. Now he's saying that maybe late fall, maybe. So we just gotta keep plugging along and hopefully whatever we got lasts. It's just-
Late fall.
It's out of everybody's hands. And we got two trucks, two years ago now. We were two trucks. One truck has been delivered to someplace in Albany. The dealership we're getting it from doesn't know why it's there and how he's gonna get it and why he doesn't have it. And the other truck, we just finally got a VIN number for it, and these have been going on two years. So, just, everything's being drug out real bad.
Well, together.
Yeah, yeah, by who knows what minions, maybe, or something. I only have one request, I forgot to put it on here. We've budgeted to replace the dump body on one of our small pickup trucks, and we budgeted, I think, fifteen thousand, and Robert Green has one in stock, and it's right around twelve thousand.
A discount.
That's right.
Hey!
What a deal, such a deal.
Raise.
So we saved a little bit of money there. So I would like permission to go ahead and do the purchase order and get that coming.
Motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Carry.
And that is all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Well.
Good job.
Are we any closer to getting the million dollar screen?
When will they do that?
Saves the wipes from going in the system.
Yes.
We got it.
Yeah.
I knew we would.
We'll be here two months.
Chief?
Guessing, did everybody got my report again?
Yeah.
Two for two? No. You didn't? Yes, you did.
I didn't get it. Oh, I am, I didn't get it.
You didn't get it?
You did, happily.
Thought you were the second one after the mayor.
I'm the first.
Yeah, all right, well, I'll have to relook at that one then.
You did?
I got it.
All right, you got my-
Oh.
Here's a key going, I saw already.
Actually, as far as call volume, we had about thirty less calls, I think, than we did last month. They're a lot less intrusive, I guess is a good word. Again, we're still short-staffed. We had an incident Friday, July eighth into July ninth. I don't know if you guys heard about it, it's probably on Facebook, I'm not on social media, so I don't really know. But, uh-
Did we car crash?
No, that's, that's last night.
I'm sorry, I'm being a spoiler right now.
No, no, yeah, no. So anyways, up on Park and High Street, somebody went through a bunch of vehicles, pulled for like fifteen vehicles that were unlocked. They, so we dealt with several complaints on Saturday morning. People were waking up to their cars having gone through and, you know, these larcenies and stuff. We have a couple people in mind that we think. However, we don't have any solid evidence at this very moment, so I'm asking if anybody that knows anything, heard anything, you know, if they can call us at, you know, the police station, they can remain anonymous. But if anybody has any kind of like surveillance equipment or the ring tone or the ring, you know, surveillance or whatever, they can check that between, we got it narrowed down between eleven-thirty Friday night and twelve-thirty AM Saturday morning. So that hour, if somebody's just walking on the street, even if it has nothing to do with anything, that if we could get a look at that, that maybe we could match up a couple of our suspects that we have right now.
So whoever stole from the cars on High Street, you're gonna get caught.
Yeah. So we're working-
You know, someone saw you with a camera or something.
Yeah, yeah, usually, usually, right. So if anybody saw anything that night, that morning or something, you know, it was pretty much just those two streets.
High Street.
Park Street.
High Street and Park Street.
Yep, so they went right up one and down the other, and, yep, so. Then we had the car crash. I guess the sheriff's office handled that, so I don't have a lot of detail on that, other than the fact that the, the operator of the vehicle came down Prospect Avenue, didn't make the corner or the stop sign, and barreled into Walton Motors vehicles there on that corner. I know the individual did get arrested, and that's about all I really know about the case.
And is still alive?
And is still, yeah, that's always the case. So-
If it was us, we would have died.
Anybody else would have been killed on contact.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it looked like a pretty bad accident this morning when I went and looked at it. I do have something I'd like to put before the board. I'd like to finish the background check on Sharon Radke. I'd like to gain permission from the board to hire her to fill Rich's position as the police clerk. She's a local person. She has a lot of time, she's spent up at DSS, and she's gonna be retiring soon, so she's looking for a retirement job. So I'm asking permission to hire her for that position.
I make that motion. Is that good?
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Anybody?
It'll be sixteen fifty.
For hour?
Per hour, yep.
You mentioned background check. Has been done.
Has been done, yep. Everything's, yep.
Well, she's coming from an agency that-
Right.
Has that all under wraps.
Right. And she's, she's, like I said, I think she's got over twenty-plus years, I wanna say twenty-five, but I'm not a hundred percent. So, but she's, she's, I think she's gonna work out really well. And that's really all I got for right now.
We, going through the executive session?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Stick around.
Okay. Stick around.
Happy, happy.
Okay, trustee reports, we'll start with Nate.
Yeah, I'm reading small. By next month, I'll have a new printer. First is Austin Linkin Park, where I've been running for the summer. Everything's going very well. The arts and crafts have been well attended. We've had, had fifty kids at a time at the arts and crafts. The pavilion has been filled right up, and basketball's been well attended. We've had like five to fifteen players a day. So we're very excited about that, and we encourage people to keep on coming down from nine to noon on Mondays through Thursdays. Now into next month. The tennis courts are open. We have one net up for regular tennis, and very soon we'll be marking out the other court for pickleball. So you pickleball players, be excited, it's coming. Reminder that basketball and arts are still running, okay, I already did that. Onto the pool. The pool is off and running. On our busy days, we've had sixty to seventy swimmers, swimmers in our big pool, and thirty to forty little swimmers in our kiddie pool. We're proud that we did have a successful WSI course at the pool in June, and three of our lifeguards have included, completed water safety instructor certifications. So that means we will be able to have swimming lessons, which we're very excited about. Those lifeguards who completed their water safety instructor certifications are Saraya Vestrefelt, Willard Pettit, and Kindra Church. So we're very proud of them and thankful to them, and we will therefore be able to start chlorine levels, providing, assuming we have enough chlorine to run the pool. Swimming lessons will start on Monday, July eighteenth, for our first session. And we're very much hoping to have a second session. We don't know yet if we will. We're very much hoping to have the first session, assuming that we can keep getting chlorine to run the pool. Lifeguards will need to be bumped up. These three, Saraya, Willard, and Kindra will need to be bumped up to the WSI pay rate of thirteen thirty an hour, and I would like to make a motion to move them to that pay rate.
I'll make the motion.
I made the motion.
You'll make your second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, carry.
Thank you very much. So again, assuming we can meet our chlorine needs, and right now we do have enough chlorine to keep, keep going for the immediate future. As of Friday, we had a hundred and thirty gallons on hand, and today we were able to get in two, two more fifty-five gallon drums, so that's gonna keep us going at least through next week and hopefully a little beyond. We're hoping for another delivery on Thursday. Of course, we don't know if we'll get that because it's a national shortage and it's still ongoing. But thus far, we've been able to run. Our hours are a little limited. We're, we're now closing the pool at seven PM, so we have open swim Mondays through Fridays from one to five. We have adult swim from five to six, and then again, we have open swim from six to seven. And the pool will be closing at seven o'clock for the foreseeable future this summer. And that's where we're at with the park right now. So everything's going pretty well, we're very happy with it. Come on down to the park, get off the screens, send your kids, come and have a good time. Moving on to the Walton Theater, we heard from Sandy and Gail about the renovation projects that are ongoing. Last weekend, we had Elvis at the theater, and we still have one more showing of that. You can catch Elvis at Wednesday, on Wednesday at one o'clock, if you haven't seen it yet. Coming in next is Paws of Fury, The Legend of Hank, and that's gonna play from July fifteenth to the twenty-seventh. We also have this month's classic flicks coming in. Raiders of the Lost Ark, for you Indiana Joan fans. On Thursday, July twenty-first, you can come and see Raiders of the Lost Ark. We also have a very special person coming in, a very special evening with author and public speaker, and multi-trauma Sir Thriver, Maureen Spataro, and she will share the single most important ingredient we all possess in order to move past any type of trauma in our lives. And this event with Maureen Spataro will be Sunday, July seventeenth at seven PM at the Walton Theater. We also look forward to the new seasons for the Music on the Delaware concerts and coffee houses, as well as the popular Manhattan Short Festival, and those will all begin in September. Also beginning in September will be rehearsals for this year's Delaware River Stage Company Christmas show. Any interested adults or students who would like to be in the show can contact either myself, or Molly Happel, or Paula O'Brien for more information. But that will be right directly the first week of September. Soon as school starts, those rehearsals, rehearsals will start. So anyone who's interested should come on down. We'd love to have a big show, we always do, and we're excited about it.
Is the trauma thing a seminar?
Uh, it's a special evening with author and public speaker. So I wouldn't say it's a seminar, but it's, it's, it's a lecture, and she'll, she'll, she'll talk about her experiences and her writings.
Are they putting in the paper like they do with the movies?
I would assume they would. I, I, I'm not sure about that, Stephen.
Yes, yes.
It is, they, they took it out.
There we go, we have confirmation, it will be in the paper.
Because I won't remember.
That's all I have for us.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Eric?
Yep. Well, our department has covered it already, but just want to say how pleased I am about the results for the Curry well testing. I can't emphasize how important that well project is to the community, and that, just very happy with the progress we've made there. As far as code goes, again, I mean, the report shows how much activity is going on in the village with renovations. And so Walton is very busy and a lot of good progress being made. But other than that, that's, that's all I have to share.
Dick, anything you want to say?
No, it's just, it's just executive session.
Steve?
I have nothing to report. Shane got me covered.
Good. As far as the mayor's report, the Bolin Alley is making good progress. The electric is done, the pipes, the water pipes are being worked on. He's already purchased the lanes that he needs to put down there, and he's already made an agreement with the guy who took out the lanes when Holly Hunter was here to put the new ones back in.
Get out.
Yeah.
Sorry.
The guy, he lives in Jersey, he already got a contact for that. So everything's working pretty good. The only issue is sometimes it takes some, a little bit of time to get some stuff in, which we all know what's going on. So it, it may not be right after the fair, but it'll be close to it. Huh? Yeah, I haven't seen the paint, yeah.
They've cleaned the windows, it, it, it's improving.
It's getting, it's baby steps, right?
It's exciting.
All right. This past Friday, I went to a ribbon cutting, one fifty Delaware on the second floor. There's an art gallery that opened up, it's called Kipins, K-I-P-N-Z. I think it's good, it's something we need in the area. If anybody's around, please go up and take a look at it. Below on the first level, there's going to be a hair salon, hair student hair, whatever you want to call it, I don't know the right phrase to be calling it. That'll be there soon, when we have a ribbon cutting and make sure that the code, everything is up to code, then we'll open there. And I also heard one of the, next door, there's gonna be another store coming in there soon too. So we're, we're moving in a pretty good direction. We're waiting for Tom's tie bond to come down, because everybody keeps asking me when. It's gonna be in July, and as soon as that, there'll be something else coming in. We don't know a hundred percent what it is yet, so, but there will be a franchise coming in.
I hope it's food.
It will be food, for sure. And as far as I go, that's, that's all we have right now. We're, we're just moving in a-
Did you want to mention that?
Oh, oh, yeah. The, the Veterans Club gave us flags. They've been doing this for a while, and I, sometimes I forget to say it. I wrote them a letter, the president of the Veterans Club to thank him. How many flags did you get, twenty, twenty-one, something like that? Twenty-two flags. Twenty-two flags, that the Veterans Club paid for. I thought that was very nice, the crew put them up, and, because you know, they don't, they're too long, they get dirty, and so it was very, very, very nice that they did. Like I said, I sent them a letter and say thank you.
Are their dinners back on?
I believe so, yeah. They, they have their dinners up there.
Did we send Courtney Hannon's friend a letter thanking him for the, for the pool furniture?
Nope. I don't have the contact ever.
Let's ask her.
If you, yeah.
Did you hear that, that Courtney's friend sent a whole school of really, really loved pool furniture and brought it here, so that we'd have stuff to go around?
Well, I saw it at the pool this afternoon, but I, um-
Yeah, they donated it to us.
Yeah, Courtney Hannon had a connection, he called her up.
Yeah, I gotta make a letter. If you can get me any information, I'll write the letter. Okay, that's it for me right now. Budget amendments, number six, we need to, the final budget amendments for the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one, and twenty-twenty-two. You all had a chance to take a look at them. You need to get a motion for that?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry. Number seven, this is for the Walton School Tax Collection site. Hi, Jody, at this time of year again, I would like to request that the county treasurer's office be able to sit at the village hall to collect school taxes on nine sixteen to nine, nine twenty-seven, and ten twenty-seven, from ten thirty to four. Please let me know if it's okay, Meg.
I make the motion.
Is that good?
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry. Next is the Walton High School homecoming. Here are the details I have of it. The parade route will be the bus garage down Delaware Street, right onto Bridge, left onto Stockton, right onto Maple, left onto Walton Central School parking entrance. Start time approximately nine, nine fifteen on Saturday, nine twenty-four, twenty-two. About three hundred participants. I am attaching this certificate of insurance. Thank you for your help, and I'm looking back. So, need a motion for that?
Motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry. Thank you. Number nine, car crews. We would like to have the, the regular car crews this season on Saturday, August thirteenth, starting at six PM-